Planning Commission on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. At seven oh two, the meeting is now open. If you haven't picked up your packets that are in the back of the room, please do so. You'll be able to follow along with some information because we're going to be covering an awful lot tonight. With that, would you please join me for the pleasure of allegiance to the United States of America? Thank you. My pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, commissioners, consideration of the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or comments on the agenda? None? I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. May I have a second, please?
I have a second.
Discussion?
Sorry, no discussion.
What kind of music are we listening to, Bob?
I have a brand new phone and I don't know.
Yes. Okay, I did make a motion to approve the agenda, and it was seconded by Jerry Colka. She's pretty good, by the way. I'm going to get a discussion. Okay, discussion on the agenda? No discussion, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Public commentary. If anyone would like to speak, please keep your comments to no more than two minutes. Also, fill out a speakerphone form if you haven't already. Veronica over here has them. And if you'd like to speak, please bring your form up to Barbara Boudros. Well, I'm surprised, all these people, you don't want to speak. Now's your opportunity, you know. Okay?
We have one.
You have one?
Oh.
Great, we have somebody. My name is Tom Stillings. I live at five seventy South Golden Beach. Before I start, is anybody on the planning commission familiar with, or have you read the enabling legislation for zoning?
Yeah.
Good. There's a lot in there. One of the things that I noticed is that nowhere in there does it give municipal government the authority to pick winners and losers. Nowhere in there does it give municipal government the authority to decide what choices the public should have. Now, I shop at the Eastport Market. I like the Eastport Market. I've met the owner, nice guy. He runs a good shop. I've had one experience with a Dollar Shore type of thing. We were down in Alabama for a month, Gulf Shores, needed to buy some stuff. It's a junk store. He's got nothing to fear from them. We also have to worry about the nature of our governance. If we don't apply our ordinances fairly across the board and not try to jury-rig things as much as we might like the existing businessmen in town, you know, it actually flies to the face of the enabling legislation for us to even consider doing that. And a corporation the size of the one in question, you know, they got lawyers like you've never seen, and they'll run through our township budget court, you know, quicker than you can say Jack Robinson. Your head will spin. So I'm concerned about my tax dollars, and I'm concerned about the way we run our government. I mean, I've had experience, I was a township trustee for sure. I spent six years on this body, so I know a little bit about what goes on and how they're supposed to go on. And the idea of moving zoning district lines or making changes to accommodate an existing business, as much as, you know, I feel in one respect like, gee, that's a good thing to do, it's not. Because once we start bending and breaking rules, you know, we have nothing, and we've become not much more than a banana republic. So I hope you'll consider this in your deliberations. And also, as far as the airport thing is concerned, go into those enabling legislation things, and you'll find a lot in there about the airport, too. Thank you. You're welcome. Would anybody else like to speak? Next on our agenda is the minutes from July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Like to review the minutes. Does anybody of the commissioners have any changes or additions they'd like to make?
I need a, maybe a clarification, could have missed it. Under twelve concerns of the commission, Steve was talking, suggests commissioners' email be taken off the website, you know, no problem with the statement there. Just to allow, you know, notice received emails, could not check distribution. Oh, excuse me, I jumped, correspond to the official. In change of legislation, this could be an issue. I agree with that. Bob Hawkins mentioned that he did notice he received many emails and did not check distribution. He questions if he can delete emails with response being no. Question, do you know who said no? I might have missed it, tired at the end of the meeting.
It was a entire discussion, but overall, I can't find that.
Okay. All right, because one of my questions here is tired of this. Discussion ensued with input being requested from consultancy Langford with retention of emails being preserved. Kathy, I know is here, but we don't need to get it now. But I thought our policy, the IT right, preserves our emails in a default situation that even if we deleted. And I've been operating under that for quite a few years now. If that's not the policy, and it's somewhere in writing on the township, I'd be happy to change it. I guess at that time I didn't pick it up on it. I just wanted to bring it up here to make clarification of if we have the policy, what it should be.
Thanks, Jerry. Anybody else have any corrections or additions? Yeah, I do. Veronica?
Yeah.
If you'd look under number four, public hearing. If you go down to the line that says county since two thousand and eight, two lines down, okay? The next line down, it says same reason for everyone. Perhaps we can change that wording a little bit?
Do you follow me? No.
Okay, number four, public hearing.
No, yeah.
Okay, go down three lines. It says same reason for everyone. It just doesn't flow very well.
Okay, so one saying to, um, before reason?
Yes, please.
Absolutely.
This is going to be hard to find, but, okay. On the next page, under commissioners ask questions of applicant and audience, airpark planning consultant, you follow that? Okay. This is hard to point out from here, but I'm going to try. If you scan down the page on the left-hand side where it says commission, the word commission, go one line below that, the airport in there. Could you please change that to master plan? We're talking about the master plan. I'm almost finished. I'll be a nitpicky here.
Master plan, that doesn't even make sense.
Okay, under public commentary, the next page. Okay, Colka speaks to the streaming system. I think it's important we put in the word YouTube, because that's the system we're using. You see that in the first sentence?
Yeah.
Okay, and then if you go down under approval of minutes, under number seven, was unable to obtain record copy on online video, if you could put YouTube in there as well, please?
Is there online?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And that's just, I'm done with being nitpicky, but you did a great job on these minutes. They're very long. No more corrections to the minutes? Can I have a motion, please? Accept the minutes as corrected?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as discussed and corrected.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, Bob, second's a discussion. Okay, I'd like to have a vote, then. All in favor, accepted, the minutes as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is ongoing reports. First one is a zoning administrators' report.
The zoning administrators' report is on your table.
Yep.
I'm not going to go through it, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer
Do we have any questions? Bob? Russon? Okay. The next is the PC representative to the ZBA.
Yes, we met last Wednesday, September eighth. During the meeting, we finalized our review of our procedures, applications, guidelines, and also the relevant part of the zoning ordinance. And the ZBA is recommending some changes, here's a copy for you, of chapter twenty of I believe Sarah has reviewed most of those. I know she wasn't there last week, but was the prior meeting when we did most of the work.
Right, and I know that was, the chairman asked for it to be on tonight's agenda for the planning commission to consider, and in working with Bill, we didn't put it on because we already had a full agenda. So hopefully that'll be something we can deal with in October, at the October meeting.
So what, Cole, what we'll do is, I'll make sure all the commissioners have this in the next couple of days, both hard copy and email, and we're going to put it on the agenda for October to review in detail. So if you would please, all of you, look at the zoning changes on here. I have a little inside track on this. They're pretty straightforward, and some of the language has changed just to meet the times, but we need to really look at this long and hard. So, thank you. Jason, board representative report?
Absolutely. Yeah, last month at our meeting, the board approved the M eighty-eight rezoning request. The board voted on and approved the removal of the word intern from our zoning administrator, our assistant zoning administrator. We also approved the contract for MD heat. This building is going to have new boilers put in. The ones that we have now need to be replaced very badly. The south station that we have, they're also going to get a new heating system in there. Deputy clerk is now getting fifteen dollars an hour for scanning. And the board approved the abandonment of grave sites one through four in lot sixty-four and grave one in lot sixty-five. This will allow expansion for construction of the road in the cemetery.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ongoing reports? Okay, the next, we're going to move on to correspondence. We're going to cover two things under correspondence. The first one is going to be the airpark, and the second is going to be, for lack of better terms, Dollar General. So rather than read the letters out loud, each one of the commissioners have copies of your letters. So under airpark, Dr. Roth, your letter is in our packet. In Bay Harbor Club Association, your letter is in our packet. Under the Dollar General concern, don't know how else to put that, we have letters from Charles Davis, Martin Niswonger, and Solomon, please forgive me, Suwolski, I think I've got it right, as a matter of fact. So those letters are being considered by the commissioners. Next on the agenda, conflict of interest. I would ask each commissioner, if you feel you have a conflict of interest on any of the topics tonight, please point that out right now. So we're all good? Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Continuation of rezoning request PCA two thousand and twenty-one dash oh-two and two thousand and twenty-one dash thirty-four for the Torchport Airport LLC. Before we get into this, I'd like to give Mr. Bazie the opportunity to address the group. I understand he would like to.
Check, check. Thank you. I want to start by thanking you guys for giving us that month break from July until now to make sure that we had everything right coming into this again. And actually, I think we've made some major headway on that, which Sarah has put it in there, but I want to talk about a few things. I do want to, I think based on me being able to talk the first time, and then the public comments that ensued for the next three and a half hours, I just want to, I want to, you know, talk about that for a moment, because I want to reiterate the fact that the reason why I started the rezoning of these residential lots to commercial was because I felt my hand was being forced by the township to begin with. In my package that I submitted in July, I included an email from Alan, which, in lack of better words, says, "You have to do this, or else we're going to force your compliance." So, again, looking at it, I figured, based on this airport being here for eighty years, it's nonconforming, it's legal nonconforming, I mean, how much issue could I run into? Worst-case scenario, I end up in court, and I'm going to fight the township because I bought something that's been there longer than the township rules. But in good faith, and wanting to preserve this airport, because again, I live across the street, it is truly an extension of my backyard, I didn't want somebody else to buy it and redevelop it for some crazy purpose with me being a pilot, me being a neighbor to it. I wanted it to stay a small community airport for generations to come. Okay? So again, going through what I'm going through, I feel for several reasons I'm getting a black eye in the community that I now live in full-time for misinformation or bad information, or because I was forced to do something that otherwise I wouldn't have done. Okay? I mean, that's really the first part of it. And with that, kind of being forced into this, we had thought, and this is part of why we took that month additional off, we had thought during that time that several portions of both runways, the east-west runway, the westerly portion of it, on the original township maps that we had and we consulted, we worked with zoning, there was a portion of nine-two-seven that was unresidential, not in the maps, zone commercial. The southern point of four-two-two ran over onto a residential lot, even though it's on FAA registry as being the airport forever, it ran over onto a residential lot. So those two big lots, we included into the rezoning of commercial because we thought we had to. There was a portion of the runway that crossed over. In addition to that, there is a FAA-published taxiway, north-south taxiway, that I can provide a copy of it. It's been a published taxiway for over twenty years. That is on a residential lot, so that was the third lot that we had added. And then the commercial hangars are separated by what was going to be a residential development, and then it goes back to commercial runways. My intended purpose was to make all three of those sections commercial, because if anybody's been here for any length of time, it's been a failed residential development for twenty-two years. Once spec house was built, it was bought by one person that has nothing to do with aviation, and it's just a failed development. I have pilots in the area that would like to build hangars, but as part of this process, I was told this week, if I applied to build a house in a hangar on an airpark development that's been approved by the township for twenty years, I would be denied. So I am therefore continuing with my request to have those residential lots, because this is one of the things we were thinking about. If we left them residential, could we just build a hangar in a small, you know, kind of a temporary residence within that hangar? And it was determined that that could not happen. I can't even build a house and a hangar as an accessory use building, because hangars do not fall in residential. Now again, mind you, this project has been approved, it's been marketed for twenty years. It would have had houses and hangars, up to forty-six hangars with forty-six full-time planes in this, had it, you know, had it worked. How I'm now being told I can't even build my own personal hangar on a lot that I own, on an airport that I own, is crazy to me. But that's the position I'm being pushed into. So I'm still going to continue with the thirty-one residential lots, because again, they're sandwiched between commercial property already. So it's not like we're going to cross the runway and build something crazy between hangars and a runway. I want this thing to be an airport, and I want it to use it as airport use and intended use. But I can't do that under the current residential terms, again, on something that has already been approved by the township. Again, I don't know if that's a fight I'm going to have to fight or not, but it's just, it's not a good feeling. But again, today, taking that break, I do want to thank those that have helped me over the last couple of months in the township, because I have formally withdrew those large tracts of land that we originally submitted to have rezoned, because it has been determined the runways, everything is commercially zoned, there's no pieces of the runways that fall into residential, which drops off immediately like a hundred acres of what we were trying to get rezoned. And again, I wasn't trying to get a two-hundred-acre zoned conglomerate to build anything, it was just because I felt I was forced to, and those lots are, you know, it's a hundred-acre parcel. Well, I only needed five of it for a runway, but I had to do the whole parcel. That's why it looked like it got so big, but really didn't need to. So we formally withdrew those two from the application. And again, I think these guys, because they found the maps, we don't have to go through it, you know, the runways are at least preserved, but I still have the middle section, the published taxiway, and the residential houses. Again, if you go to the airport, and you go down the driveway, and you go into what would be the residential, there's been signs there for twenty years that go right through the residential that says taxiway, airplane use only. Again, the email that I got from the township said, I can't take an airplane from the hangar through the residential to the runway, because it crosses residential. It's just not, it's not fair that I'm putting in this position twenty years after the development. So again, dropping those portions, just leaving the thirty-one residential lots, and again, if everybody knew the heart and spirit that I have behind this thing, honestly, as this thing develops, there's going to be a few more hangars, long and short, but I don't want to be pigeonholed where I can't even take a plane in certain aspects or certain areas of the airport. I've got to be able to, you know, be free to, you know, taxi a plane. Or if neighboring pilots or people from other communities come in, and they don't know where the residential versus commercial is, they get in trouble. We proved that last year, because they crossed the line, and they got ticketed for being, you know, five foot over the commercial versus residential line. It's not right. I shouldn't have to deal with that. The aviation community shouldn't have to deal with that. It should just be all properly zoned. Again, regardless of why the residential community didn't work, it didn't, and we've got to fix that. So again, I honestly believe I'm taking the brunt of a lot of negativity at this point for a problem the township created, and now I'm saddled with. I mean, like, it was told to me, I don't know how this got approved twenty years ago. Well, it did. Why do I have to fight about it today? If I want to put a hangar on one of those lots on the side of the runway, I shouldn't have to fight about it. It's an airport. So because of this failure, or, I mean, I feel failed at this point by the township that I live in permanently, full-time, that I'm requesting, based on Steve Langworthy's options that he provided, that at minimum, the residential lots, which again, they're already sandwiched between commercial, so it's not going to change anything, that those lots at least get put back to commercial, because they were originally commercial, they were only changed twenty years ago, and so that I can at least start my own hangar development. My house is almost done, I'm moving back in, I got my plane in Traverse City. I can't bring here yet, because I don't have a place to put it, and I can't even start because I'm told I can't. So at minimum, I would like to, you know, utilize option E of Steve's, I don't even know what you'd call it, and get the residential lots, when I say residential, they're all zoned residential, the lots that were earmarked for housing, at least get those done, and then that little section in the middle that I think is, I don't know what the acreage is, but I think it's like twelve acres. And again, it's sandwiched, or it's a pie-shaped area between the two runways that includes that FAA taxiway. Do that later, if you want. It doesn't matter, because it's been used as aviation for decades. I don't think I could get stopped by doing it. I don't think, you know, it's been that way forever. I think that's part of still a legally nonconforming use, whether it gets changed or not, I think the township would be hard-pressed to issue tickets for somebody taxiing or using that property. And I think it'd be crazy to do it, but at least give me the opportunity to do something nice, you know, in the community. So I think, I think that's it. You guys have any questions for me?
Not right now.
Okay.
As we move forward, just so the audience understands, Steve Langworthy at the end of the blue shirt is our consultant specifically for the airpark, and he's made recommendations for us to consider on how we would move forward with the process. So it's more of an educational meeting tonight for the commissioners to understand the process that we need to go through and derive it a firm direction as we go forward in considering Mr. Bazie's application. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Evening.
Okay.
That's all right. I prepared this for the planning commission, as you know, Bill, it's kind of an educational piece, but it also gives you some choices to make, and we'd like to have some discussion on which of these you think would be most effective moving forward. But I'll go through all of them first, and then we can go back and, I'll ask or answer questions you might have on any one individual.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. The first one is, the most obvious one, is to evaluate the rezoning. That would be with reduced acreage, because you formally withdrew that. We have something writing for that, I believe, don't we? Yeah. Evaluate rezoning with that reduced acreage, using the existing master plan and zoning ordinance. The reason I mentioned using the existing master plan is the master plan has no mention directly of the airport in terms of its position in the community, or being advantaged to being in the community or anything like that. There's absolutely no discussion of it whatsoever. So one of the things in a later suggestion would be that we, at some point, amend the master plan to include some discussion about the airpark in that, but that could be a later process. I will also say that this particular option of using the application as it stands now and the documents, both master plan and the zoning ordinance as it stands now, that's the recommendation of your team, which would be Sarah, Todd, and myself. More to get it disposed of, if anything else, so we can work on something perhaps maybe a little bit more reasonable. So if you do that...
Excuse me, Steve, can you explain that a little further? What would be more reasonable?
I'm getting to that. That's one of the more, that's one of the other options.
Okay.
So as I was saying, these are a range of options, you know, apart from that first one we just suggested. Those are just for discussion for you guys about moving forward. One doesn't necessarily preclude another. Was there something here we could do both in terms of moving forward for, let's say, amending the master plan? We could go forward with that while we act on the rezoning as it stands now. I also put in your document there at the end, or somewhere near the end, some rezoning factors, evaluation factors we could use. I kind of took Sarah's eight, I think. So the Sarah eight and my three, and kind of made sure that all of Sarah's were included in my three, but I have a general, much more concise, I think, but encompassing a lot of the things. Uh, but encompassing a lot of the things, and I'll get to that later too. The second option, just prior to doing anything on the rezoning, would be to go ahead and amend the master plan. The advantage of this one is it would give the, the community, because you have, there are several public meetings and public hearings you'd have to have. It would give the community the op, the option or access or opportunity uh, to come before you and discuss the airport or airpark and how the community, uh, thinks it ought to be, uh, how it ought to fit, uh, here. So doing that under a broader application, in other words, a master plan amendment rather than a specific rezoning application, that would be the township's option. In other words, the township would begin the amendment process. The applicant wouldn't have anything to do with it, uh, with respect to the airpark. So that would be our, and that would, the gentleman was, the gentleman talked about the enabling act. That would be the one, the planning enabling act, not zoning, he was speaking zoning. But that planning enabling act, uh, procedure would be followed for that. The next option involves the zoning ordinance itself, where we would amend the zoning ordinance to include airport uses in a residential district. Uh, and we could do that either as a permitted use with some, uh, restrictions or a special land use, which would require a public hearing and, and additional, uh, input from the community. Uh, I think we probably would recommend the special land use approach if that, if it came to that. Uh, the next one is to amend the zoning ordinance to create a specific airport zoning district. A lot of communities do this that have airports, uh, bearing descriptions within their community. They actually create a, uh, what we call a special district. Uh, and a special district would be one that would cover the airpark. In other words, it would have its own zoning. It wouldn't be commercial, it wouldn't be residential, it would be airport or airpark, whatever name you chose for it, uh, at that point. And then you could write regulations as you wish them to be, uh, to fit under that category. Uh, next one is, is the one the applicants talked about, about reducing the number of acres. Uh, one of the things you should know as a planning commission, you have the option of not acting on the full application, e- even the reduced one. Uh, the full application, you can reduce acreage that is to be rezoned, you can't increase it. So you could always shrink, but you can't expand. If you expand, you have to do a new public hearing and a new application. But your lap, you don't have to act on what's before you. In other words, you can act on something else that's smaller than or less than, uh, what's provided. So those are the options I think we have. Uh, moving forward, there's a couple of things we'd like to recommend to you. Uh, one would be that we prepare as part of the rezoning application, prepare a finding of fact that would include discussion from the community, discussion from you all uh, about the airpark and its effect on the community so that uh, we can go in and write a finding of fact. Finding of fact would use the rezoning, if, if you took the first option of going ahead and moving ahead with the rezoning. We would use those, as I mentioned, the three, um, criteria. But they would be in the, in the form of a finding of fact. It's a little bit more formal application. It's kind of like, it's kind of like another set of minutes, if you will, uh, that describe what the application is, uh, how, what comments were made about it. And then recommendations would be at the end, uh, coming from your team. Uh, rezoning factors are there. I, I can talk about them. I don't know if it's particularly relevant, do we need to go through them right now? Uh, but at some point, we will go through those with you, depending on what option uh, or other option I hadn't thought of, uh, which might be there as well. So either one of these options, I think, again, one doesn't preclude the other. You could say, let's move forward with the rezoning as, as it has been resubmitted. Um, but also start a master plan process if you wish to. So it's kind of up to you to how you, how you want to act. Hey, you do the same thing with the rezoning or moving forward with the rezoning and creating an airport district. It would just fall under later. So these aren't, these aren't necessarily, one doesn't preclude the other. They can be used in combination, uh, over time. Good answering questions.
So the objective is that our commissioners want to get firm direction on where they want to go on one or more of these suggestions?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody understand that? Okay. Would you mind, Steve, just under, for my benefit, under A, really go in depth under that option?
Sure. Let's, let's say as, as your documents, your master plan and zoning ordinance stand today, we know there's some things that need improvement. Obviously, ZBA is thinking the same thing about some areas need improvement. Uh, but Sarah has, I think, probably a much longer list, uh, I would guess, uh, of what we need to do. But, um, i- in this case, what we would do is just use the document as we have it. In other words, you'd have to evaluate it as a commercial rezoning. And it wouldn't be commercial rezoning for airport uses or for hangars or anything else. It would just be a commercial district. Expanding the commercial district, the commercial properties that's there. The, um, outcome of that, one of the outcomes of that is in during the evaluation, when we have to evaluate it, we have to evaluate all of the potential uses in a commercial district. Not any one particular use or use that's been proposed to us. We have to evaluate all of the uses and see if they were at proper to be in that location using our rezoning factors. So it would take some time for us to, to go back and, and start that process now because we would need some help from you uh, to get both the rezoning evaluation and the finding of fact. We have a lot of comments from the, the community, which is good. We can use those too. Uh, but we also will need some discussion from you all uh, as to why this rezoning should or should not, uh, be approved. After that, we would ask, once you make that determination of which action to take, what we would ask you to do is to, uh, a motion to allow us to prepare a finding of fact to bring back to a subsequent meeting. Uh, we can do it in a month. It, it can be the next month. Don't take that long, uh, to do. Uh, and we need that in a motion from you, a finding of fact, prepare for what action you want to take. So it's not a vote to approve it or deny it at this point. It's, it's a vote to prepare a finding of fact for approval or denial. Uh, also recall that since this would be a straight rezoning, you couldn't attach any conditions to it. It's either up, it's an up or downs, uh, vote in this case. So you couldn't say, well, approve rezoning if he only built hangars there. Uh, that's not permitted under a straight rezoning process. So this would be as if you were doing a rezoning today, uh, in some other place.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions for Steve?
Um, I'm going to try to phrase this, Steve, but, you know, uh, the only experience I have with something re-beat done is the PUD for the Agmi golf course. This is nothing in that relationship. It goes on different-
No, that's completely different process.
Okay, just to make sure.
You can't, you'd have a difficulty using a PUD, I think. Here, I don't think it'd be a very good option for this. That's why I didn't include it in there.
Okay, that's what I wanted to check. That's the only experience I had. So this is entirely a different process.
Correct.
With that said, could you go into more detail on E?
E is not, not a dissembler from, from A. Uh, it's just that, at this point, you just go ahead and evaluate the reduced acreage, which we'd have, now would do anyway because it's already formalized. Part of that's already been done. But even, even under that reduced acreage, the same applies. We'd still have to evaluate it as an open rezoning to commercial and all the uses that would be allowed under a commercial district. Uh, as opposed to what he actually wants to do. It would just be a lo- a smaller acreage. The, the number of acres you would have had to rezon at those other two parcels, the larger parcels, would be huge. I mean, it's probably twenty times the amount of commercial property you have in township now, I would guess. Um, so it, that would have been a difficult valuation doing that much commercial zoning in this location.
Okay.
Uh, but reducing the acreage would be something more akin to, it'd be less impact on the community than it would be if those other two properties would be, uh, kept in.
Okay.
But we still use the rezoning factors and the master plan and so on.
Jason, do you have any questions? Barbara?
If we decided to create this special airport district, how does that affect it by Mr. Baze's argument that this has been here for twenty years and, you know, he can treat it like an airport?
Well, in, in this case, it kind of legitimized it. It would take it out of a non-conforming status, put it into a conforming status.
Even though it wouldn't necessarily cover the entire acreage that he originally was talking about? Even if it reduced down the amount of acreage?
Right, although, this case, if they're an airport district, you could probably include the acreage anyway. It wouldn't make that much difference. Because you, we would write some other regulations as to what could be in the airport district and some limitations on things, you know. I don't think you want a twenty-story hotel.
No, but we can, we can do that with the, what you're talking about. We can impose conditions or provisions or whatever by doing that, creating that district.
Specific to the airport.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I don't think so.
You can always come back. Don't worry about it. Cherry?
Uh, yeah. Trying to put perspective where some of the things that are located, you know, having been walking around the airport, you know, say, okay, this is what they want to do here, if this is what they want to do here, how's that affect the master plan or the general or the other options, including factors? You know, is this maybe addressed to Bill or Sarah? You know, commissioners-
Excuse me.
-as a whole or as a new video, just get together and see this visually so I get some idea where the acreage they're talking about changed. Originally, I thought it was only residential lots, you know, I'm seeing this change, I know it was a residential lot, but I'm not sure where all these other acreages are. And, uh, would that violate anything or, you know, or is this part of the open process we can do?
Not sure. I'm not sure if your application form includes a statement that allows you to be on the property.
I, I believe it does, but I'd have to look at it.
Yeah, and if, if he signed, that's a separate, yeah, okay. So that's a separate signature. So you're permitted to be on the property for purposes of looking at this-
Just looking.
Rezoning, but, but individually.
Yes.
I thought it was, but I wanted to make sure.
Okay.
So with that said, I would encourage each commissioner to walk that property. And if you're unsure what you're looking at, call Sarah. She'd love to take you around, wouldn't you, Sarah?
Okay, so we can use Sarah to-
Yeah, just don't use the applicant. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I know that.
Or I have a monitor on the top line. Just go by yourself while we're painting.
I have done it in the past as a chair, and that's why I wanted to make sure it was consistent.
Just to be clear, in the bylaws, it's your responsibility to walk the property.
Yeah, okay. This is so unique, I wasn't sure. That's why I wanted to ask the question, because that might help clarify some-
I, I always tell people, you can be driving by a property, you know, two times a day for half of your life. Uh, and not until you get something specific to a piece of property do you actually see things. There are things there that you will see that you didn't, you didn't see just in passing by because it's, there's something specific related to it.
Yeah, because even when we're talking about this secret COVID year, this has changed and this was this. I knew where the law squared it comes to them in that airport and something like that, so I wasn't concerned. But now it seems like other actors-
We got at least one house there to help you find it, yeah. You got at least one house there to help you find it.
Yeah, find over that one, in the whole area. Been around for probably maybe years.
Yeah.
New area before.
One question right up the top of my head is if she- Yes, sorry. You know, I'm certainly interested in some of these alternatives. I think there are some, our master plan probably should address the airport and certainly our ordinance probably could, you know, it'd be worthwhile taking a look at that. I'm not sure that it is adequately addressed. But since we have an applicant here who has asked us a question, I guess, is there a time limit on our answer? Because it appears to me that when we get into, talk about reviewing the master plan and and amending the ordinance, these things, um, can take a significant amount of time.
Yes. That's why we recommend the first option is just to kind of get this off the table. And then we can keep, if you decide not to approve it, then, let's preface that. If you gave us the option, prepare a finding of fact for denial, that would kind of get this application done. And then you could kind of sit down and start thinking about, okay, what could we do? And you could, we could talk with the applicant about that, about some of the choices that you would like him. We could probably come back. Sarah probably come back with a plan for you.
Right, and, and that, that, you know, to, to follow on that, it, it appears to me the applicant is certainly interested in using the park, property as an airpark. And not all the other commercial uses that would be, we would have to evaluate in order to, um, make a decision on this application. So I, I guess I don't know. You know, I, I would be interesting to hear what he has to say at this point, whether-
Yeah, the only caveat, yeah, I get that, but the only caveat I would have of that is keep in mind that properties can be sold. So there's no guarantee that the next property owner will have the same intent that this property owner does.
Right, but, but if his intent, I, I guess, is, is to use it as an airpark of some sort, it might be in his interest, um, if we wanted to revisit the master plan and some of the ordinance to withdraw this application and just wait and maybe have some input on the process of, of updating the master plan and so forth.
Well, that, that would be up to the applicant. We can't withdraw it for him.
Right.
But if you were to select some of the options, something you'd like to do moving forward, uh, then you can, we can discuss that with the applicant and see what he wants to do.
Anything else? Bob? Excuse me. I guess at this point-
Into the mic, please.
I guess at this point, I personally lean toward the idea of creating a special zoning district exclusively for the airport. I think, um, that would preclude exactly what we were just talking about, any future sale, if that were designated to be an airport area, that's all it could ever be. As I'm thinking back over to most of the objections stated by citizens at the last couple of meetings, uh, none of them seem to me to be directed toward building a hangar and moving a, moving a, an airplane up and down a taxiway, um, which I believe, um, I believe that's an overly restrictive, uh, condition. I myself looked at that property back when it was first offered and thought that I might build a house and keep my airplane there. So I, I know at one time it was possible to do that. I think that would not only enable Mr. Baze to achieve his objectives with his property use, it would also settle down all the concerns that I've heard voiced by the, uh, township residents and let it operate as an airport. And nothing else. So I guess that's, that's where I- I'm sorry, Steve?
Under some limitations.
Yes, right. Um, some reasonable limitations could be put in that, would be acceptable to the township and to Mr. Baze. I'm sure there's common ground here to be had. So, uh, that's my thought on it at this point.
Bob, can I just ask a clarification question really quick? Is that, would you want to take on creating that district and kind of put his applications on the side while you work on that? Or would you want to move forward with a decision on his, uh, applications and also work on that at the same time?
I, I guess, I kind of wonder if, if we, if we move on his applications now and then they're all done, say that they're, they're turned down. That's quite a lot of money that's been spent on the application process so far for these. And I would hate to see him have to spend all that money over again to start anew um, with the, with the rezoning or the creating of this other district. So I guess that is a concern of mine, is whether or not that money would be wasted as to how, how to go forward with it.
I got a question, uh, clarifying, invited up here too. And I was trying, I was going to try to bring it up earlier. Can you put a hangar on a residential lot in this, you know, township only? It's at the airport there? Or is that, uh, no, no?
The zoning ordinance only allows for a airport- The zoning ordinance only allows for airport hangers in the commercial district. So that was a part of the discussion, can it be treated as an accessory building or an accessory use? And there's a couple of spots in the ordinance that you kind of run into issues with. One, we specifically list this use in the ordinance as a use. So then to say, well, it could be a hangar or it could be an accessory building, it doesn't work that way. And then also in the residential district, it talks about being compatible with the neighborhood and adjacent uses and items like that, and I think there could be an argument that an airport hangar anywhere in the R1 district may not be compatible with the residential use of property based on how the zoning ordinance is currently drafted. So my, what I can tell you is that at the time that this project was approved, airport hangar was not a definition, was not a use listed in the zoning ordinance. Sometime after that, I don't know what the date is, you know, it's not, for our application, not really important to know that sometime later it was amended to add that specific use and to add that use into the commercial district. So had there been buildings already built, houses and hangers, they'd be non-conforming today. But that's where the issue is, is I'm not able to issue a land use permit for a use that no longer is available in that district.
Because one reason I want to bring, I want clarification of it, many years ago, I had a friend who came up wanting, thinking about, you know, buying one of the residential lots and put a hangar on it right away and then building a house. It changed his mind, you know, over the years for different reasons. That's why I wanted to ask the question for clarification, thank you.
Jason, any questions?
No, sir.
Barbara?
Nope.
Jerry?
Don't they say some of these things, you know, there's nothing against anybody else?
Take your time, we've got time.
I want to digest this and I'm not sure that, you know, tonight especially, taking this and looking at the airport and then coming back to it would be my recommendation. You know, Bob brought up interesting concept of the, I want to think of further special use, you know, for the airport only and maybe that approach. I'm weighing the pros and cons, but I don't think I can make a decision tonight objectively and reasonably.
Cole?
I have a question, I don't know if Sarah maybe has a better map. It seems like all the computer versions and hard copies I've had, it's hard to tell sometimes exactly
Do you have that digitized map?
What we're talking about?
Sarah?
I'm sorry?
Do you have the digitized map yet completed?
I don't have it with me tonight available.
Could you please send that out to the commissioners this week?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the zoning map for the whole township.
It's going to help Cole.
Okay, so, I mean, I can also work to, with GIES to try and get you the specific parcels that are involved in the request for the map, so, I mean, there is a map in your pocket.
Actually, that map's pretty explanatory.
Submitted by the applicant. You know, there's this, this one that's near the end of this agenda item that has the application numbers on it in the red boxes, so those are all included. And then on the back of that is the larger parcel that are included in the request and you'll see that there's two that have Xs on them, those are the ones that have been withdrawn from the application and then there's this pink highlighted portion, that's where the applicant was talking about the taxiway and that is still proposed to be a part of the rezoning request. So if you look at the, this last page again, it says composite sheet on the top, you're looking at this pink area and then this portion of parcel B.
Hang on, Sarah, we're catching up.
I don't have that one.
It's on the back of, it's on the back of this map and it's right after the applications.
There you go, that's it.
Oh, okay.
You know, I looked at these, Sarah, and I guess what I'm confused, I wasn't sure that, so the two Xs are where, that were in the original application and now removed.
Correct.
Then there's that triangle kind of no man's land, right? But the, the page before that has the residential area. Is that on this parcel C?
It's parcel C and parcel D.
Parcel C and D?
Yeah.
That's what I, where I got the...
Yeah, parcel C does, is a little bit, on this map is a little bit larger than that residential development. That includes some of the commercial hangers that already exist in that area, so it's a portion of parcel C, but I think generally, so you can see the layout of the request, it's that pink and then parcel C and parcel D.
That answers, solves where I was confused.
And this goes back to what I was saying, I would like, you know, to walk around having this and have a better idea where, you know, things were talking about. I was a little confused too, which parcels?
Maybe you can get your airplane ride over it.
I did that many years ago, that doesn't help.
Bob, any further comments?
No.
Any direction for us?
Yes, I'm going to get there in a minute, hang on. I love it when they're both sided printed, just for us to keep up. I know it's a budget thing, I got it.
I try to be economical.
Actually, that's a pretty good comment. By the way, he flew up here one time at his own expense, right? I went, you did? Because we're willing to pay you to do that, but he said, no, I'll do it by my own. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we consider going with item A and that you proceed moving forward with that to get the findings of fact and present to us if possible by the October meeting. Do I have a second?
And that would simply mean that they're going to come back to the October meeting and they're going to say...
All the findings of fact and...
All the findings of fact to correspond with A.
Well, you know what, rather than me answer, you guys answer.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm just wondering what the motion is.
Yeah, well...
Well, I just thought with Sarah, what do you want the finding of fact to be?
Okay.
Because it's either, as I mentioned, you only have two options, yes or no, approval or denial.
With option A.
Right.
And option A, we can't put a restriction on.
Right.
Option A is just to deal with the applications we have.
The way it stands now versus the master plan, correct?
And the only, right, and the only thing I would say is if you want to move forward with your motion and then just be sure, we do need direction on that, so don't move on from the topic. But if that helps you to say, yes, we want to move forward with the decision and then vote on that motion and then have a discussion about what that decision should look like, we can do that too, if that's easier for the planning permission to deal with.
So the motion stands, do I have a second?
Could you repeat it now, please?
Okay. I'd, my motion is that we choose option A that falls generally under the master plan. Does the, does the applicant's application fall within our current master plan? And then based on that, if you vote yes on my motion, then we'll give it back to Sarah and Steve to bring in more information as we move forward before we actually make a decision. Okay, the decision is only a way, direction of where we want to go. So if you guys want to go a different direction or multiple directions, we can do that too.
Perhaps as part of the discussion on the motion, could you give a second, yeah?
I will second it.
Perhaps a part of this discussion would be asking for discussion amongst yourselves as to what is it for denial or is it for approval and each of your opinions or discussion, however you want to do it, but we need some direction. We can't make up stuff for you, you know, this has...
Oh, darn.
What do we pay you for?
Exactly.
Well, we, we may flower the language of it. What we need from you is just some of the highlights of why you think it should be one or the other and use that information in hoping to prepare our finding of fact.
My thought process is maybe flawed, but if this, if the motion is voted on, but before we have the discussion, in the discussion process, that would come out, which way we want to go.
Yes.
So that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we, we know you want a finding of fact, but we don't know what the finding of fact is supposed to do.
Okay. So we have a second, so let's start...
We have a second, we have a second over here, more discussion.
More discussion.
Okay, let's say we go this way then, I can see the merits, I can see the merits of looking at this, you know, but yet we're limited to pros and cons. If we, at the next meeting, we're not saying this is the only way we're going to go, after we look at it, we can still say, at least, you know, if I want to make another proposal, no, I don't like going this way, I want to go another way, we're not locked into this proposal. It's a version that we're looking at and not a final decision. I want that clarification, okay, that's the case, good, no problem.
Are you guys cleared on there?
I guess I'm not.
I'm not clear on...
It's not final until you vote on the finding of fact.
Okay, so, so hang on a second, let's see, finish, go ahead, Steve.
I was saying, it's not final till you have the finding of fact in front of you and you vote on it. After we complete finding of fact and give it to you and you vote on that. This vote is only to prepare that.
If directionally, where you want to go?
It's a version, we can compare, they're going to compare this option. We're not saying this is the option we're going to use. We got another chance to review it, in my understanding, at the next meeting. That's the clarification I wanted, I didn't want to run into issues.
So if we review the finding of fact at the next meeting, is that just one more step to the precipice when we have to say yes or no?
But just to be clear, it may take them longer than that. They're not prepared to address this at the next meeting, just so everybody's clear on that. This isn't a wham-bam, we're out of here type thing.
Okay, that being said, whether it's three months or four months or six months, is, does it still take us...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Does it still take us to the point where we have to vote, accept or not accept the application?
And, and by the way, if I understand Steve correctly, you can ask him to research other areas of this at the same time.
Other areas of what, Bill?
Of the proposed...
Other options?
Yes. You just don't have to have one.
You talked about the airport district for example.
Yeah.
You can go forward with A as, as you're talking about the finding of fact and you could also, if you use a second motion, go ahead and say, we'd like you to prepare a draft of A, an airport district.
Okay, so we're, we're just asking you to go ahead and prepare the, prepare the information.
Yes.
Yeah, so what would come back at next month's meeting would be a draft where we would go through and each of the rezoning factors, we would go and say, you know, the planning commission finds, the standard hazard has not been met because of this type, whatever information we have. And we go through and do that, and then the planning commission is going to come to the meeting, you're going to go through this document, you're going to say, I like that, I don't like that, let's change this, let's add this. And then you're going to say, okay, now we're going to vote on this document and that is our decision. So we want you to agree that this is the direction that we're going, not saying that you can't change it, but we're going to spend time and dedicate energy and effort towards this, so if we don't want to come back to next month's meeting and go, let's scrap that completely and go a different direction. So we would like a little bit of a commitment that at this time, that's the best option and you're ready to move forward with drafting that findings to move forward and, and not coming to next month's meeting going, I've changed my mind completely and, you know, unless you have new information or something like that.
Yeah, Sarah, you know, I hear what you're saying, but I can't agree with you on that because I want to see this, but I don't want to throw out maybe the special use district at this point. I think I narrowed some of this down, I'm more than willing to look at it and it has a very viable option, but you want to say, hey, we have to accept this because of all the work you put in on it. I appreciate the work, but also recognize we don't have some of the same expertise and takes us time to gather and understand any of this.
And I can understand that, and I think you can always come back to next month's meeting and say, you know, I've considered it more, yeah, let's move forward with looking at an airport overlay or something like that.
In addition to?
In addition to making a decision on this application. I mean, I think it would be important tonight to decide if we're going to deal with the applications as they are or if you want to go in a completely different direction and spend more time and kind of put them on, on the back burner while you work on something. And if, what the second option looks like, that's something you can decide tonight or next month or three months moving forward.
Sarah?
This is your call.
Normally I would say no, but yes.
So what I'm not understanding, why would you want to evaluate the 27 different uses when we only want one?
It's part of the process.
Where, it's like I mentioned earlier, we evaluate it that way because we don't do it based on ownership, we do it based on what can happen. So it's as if... Let me finish, let me finish for a second. If, if, for example, somebody walked in, after we get finished this, somebody, and got that in place, somebody walked in and said, hey, I'm going to offer you something to do because I want this property and they offer enough for it, then you might say, well, yeah, let's do that. Now I got a commercial rezoning or commercial zoning in place that allows, you know, 17 different uses, what it is. That's valid when there's persons, so you don't, in rezonings for, for people, you don't rely on your property. Because rezoning goes for property, not for people.
Correct, and so the purpose we find is for, for Ben's home is coming in even after meeting and destroying the small airport. The one thing that I mentioned in the last thing, as soon as I get this thing the way I want it, is getting turned over to an association, that the association on a whole will have to throw in the towel. So one person, even if I get hit by a bus leaving here, it won't change going forward. So I'm okay putting it as an airport, but no sense seeing whether, you know, a Starbucks or a Dollar General would fit their benefit. It's an airport, it is never going to change.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah.
We love that intent.
Okay. So, I'm going to go around the table one more time. So this is directionally what we're going to vote on. And we can vote on other ones as well tonight or in the future. So I'm trying to move the chess piece forward, what I'm trying to do.
Is anyone still confused? I won't ask out here.
Okay, so if we move, and really this is in fairness to the applicant, because we can debate this for three years, okay, which I would choose not to. Okay, so in fairness to the applicant, I'm trying to move the chess piece forward. So this is one thing we can consider. And I would, I would suggest, if it's correct, that we vote on my recommend, my motion and if you want to make another motion after that for another one, we can get them working on various ones. So something to consider, okay?
Could I, one more comment, and, and I agree with you, I think we, we've got an application in front of us, we've got an obligation to respond to it. However, we're responding to an application from an applicant who says he's interested in airport. You know, and I, I guess, let me say first, I'm also interested in some of the other options. I, I think that we do need to take a look at the master plan and probably the ordinance because this airport issue is not adequately addressed. And I just feel funny knowing or thinking that we're probably going to go into that process soon, that we're answering a question that's kind of moot right now, that he's asking to put an airport, to change it to commercial, make it airport, while we're intending to afterwards...
Cole, we're not intending to do anything.
Well, I, I guess I...
Okay, we're not intending to do anything. We can consider something in the future
Right.
to affect our master plan. That's a long process.
I, I guess I'm speaking from my feelings.
Okay, that's fine.
I think that needs to be done, that's, that would be my opinion, I realize the board needs to do that, but it just seems...
Well, I think, Cole, to kind of address that is that you're, you would be considering other options and potentially amending the ordinance or the master plan, but as you go through that process, you may find that amending the master plan or the zoning ordinance is not compatible with what you want to do, so you end up not perhaps a lot, you know, changing anything. Or it doesn't get changed, just because you want to consider it doesn't mean it's going to go and be everything, you know, that Mr. Bayes wants, or it's going to be everything that the neighbors want. It's, you know, this is, it's saying, okay, let's explore this option, we don't know what the outcome's going to be. We kind of know what we'd like the concept to be, but we also have to be, in making our decision, have that justified and explained as well in our documents and under, under law and everything, so I think that to say that, you know, we're going through this process and then, you know, in a year or two years, it may, it may say, why do you, why do we even have to go through that, but I, we don't know what the end outcome of a master plan amendment or a zoning amendment looks like at this time.
Okay. I kind of, you know, looking at, and just so we can get some motion on here, some new activities, even though I don't want to throw out the other plans, I like... activities, even though I don't want to throw out the other plans, I like to see something coming back for A. And as we discuss it more, I don't see a problem in working on it, as long as this is just a version. It's not, you know, the final decision.
I think that's clear.
Without more time to spend on it. We might take a couple sessions really going over and develop an understanding. In the interim, I'm going to get with you, Sarah, look around there a little bit, some better field. Okay.
Any other discussion?
That's my opinion.
Quiet. Jason?
You guys are recommending A. And you're asking for E.
A hundred percent, because A makes no sense. You guys are going to contemplate a whole bunch of things that don't matter. I mean, when I'm trying to build a commercial district, I'm trying to keep an airport intact, that, you'll probably hear from a prior developer, a planned good development was approved by the township. I want it to stay intact. I'm not trying to do anything different than maintain an airport. So I don't know why we're beating bushes that have no proof.
Okay, first of all, I need to get a point of order here. If you want to ask somebody a question in the audience, you need to talk to me first. Okay? This is point of order. So thank you.
Okay.
So, we're at, any more discussions? I'd like to vote on the motion now. All in favor of going with A as we move forward, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
We have three, what is it?
Roll call.
Roll call vote, please. Bob?
Nay.
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Yes. Barbara?
Yes.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Okay, that, does anybody want to make another motion tonight on any of the other options?
I would.
Okay, great.
I would like to make a motion that our consultants bring back what a possible amendment to the master plan and to the zoning ordinance would look like, you know, if, if we decided to do B and C, or B or C, or whatever, what would that look like? You know, so that I know, I just need to have some thing to compare.
Yeah, I think, I think the goal, and if you want us to do that, the goal would be to legitimize the airport under some restrictions.
Right, and what I heard from most of the people who's, public that spoke, as well as the people that I have met since that meeting, and have talked to about it.
Which you should be doing.
Well, no, but I mean, they come to me and they say something, and I just, you know, okay. But what I'm hearing is that they don't mind the airpark. I mean, everybody knew it was there, they've known it was there for 20 years, they don't really mind that. What they didn't like was all the things that we're hearing about this huge commercial development that was going to go in there. And that kind of screwed everything up. So I think we need to, and, and everybody was talking about, well, we can, we can put regulations in, we can put conditions in, if we do it this way, but not if we do it that way. And I think everybody, people might be happy if we had, if we knew, because most people said, I need to know exactly what Mr. Bayes is going to do before I, I'd be happy with anything happening.
Or what can.
Right, or what he can do. Right, exactly. And so I think that's why I'm asking about the amendments, and to see if that's maybe more what we should do, is create the, the airport district, and figure out what, you know, the restrictions would be, figure out what amending the zoning ordinance would look like, and what amending the master plan would look like.
That's definitely something we could do for you.
Okay.
That was an emo, form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
It's very long.
Barbara, I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion?
Yeah, I kind of like that one, too, to look at, and that's what I was alluding to earlier, so, I know it gives you a lot more work, but, and the other hand, that's okay, you're doing it, where it's commissioners got to look at it. All right. Very good, though, I like to see that.
Any more discussion?
I do.
Okay, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, good. Any more discussion on this particular agenda item?
We do need some direction for drafting these findings of fact. If these findings of fact are going to be in support of granting a rezoning request, or if they're going to be to deny the rezoning request.
And that's as, as if we're doing that A.
For, yes, just for A, so looking at that, and perhaps, if you wanted to, to kind of talk about the, you know, on the last page, it's on page three, that talk about the findings, you know, these are what we're going to be drafting. So if there's any kind of discussion the planning commission can have related to that, to help us work on putting your words into language.
Flowering.
You flowering language, you know, with some exhibit supporting documents related to that, that would be helpful for us.
All right, you want us to do some of this?
Well, I see.
I mean, I'm not sure.
Right, we need to have some discussion, I mean, when, you know, we're talking about, the master plan does not, does not even discuss this topic.
Right.
I mean, how, what, what do you think about that, as the planning commissioners? Does that make you want to allow it because it doesn't talk about it? Does it say it doesn't talk about it, therefore it's not allowed? You know, something like that, compatibility with the neighborhood, to rezone the commercial, looking at commercial as the uses, all uses in there, that kind of discussion to, to get us started on something for you. We don't want to make assumptions of how you, what you're thinking.
Right. I'll take a shot at that.
Go for it.
Okay. Well, your findings of fact, I don't, I don't see how, a, a total commercial zone where anything can be done that's allowed a commercial district, how that would be appropriate there since it is primarily in a residential, surrounded by residential. So that would be one point that I would make, and I think that the master plan, where it talks about being, maintaining our, our rural character, and, you know, all that stuff in there about how great this area is because it's so wonderful and pristine and da, da, da. I don't think that's compatible with a large commercial development on that parcel. I don't think it's compatible with surrounding properties, because most of the surrounding properties are residential. I don't think anybody wants a zoo on that property that lives in that area. Yeah, property, it would adversely affect property values, it would adversely affect traffic flow, it would, with the noise could potentially be a nuisance, the traffic may be out of control, depending on what's there, and how people are getting in and out of there. So I just don't see that, that, that is being compatible with that residential area. Compatibility of this site to accommodate these. Oh, and I, I don't know about number three. That, that would be proposal's use specific, I would think.
It kind of deals with your discussion.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I'm done.
Pretty good, Jackson.
One of the things I also look at is that not all factors, if we want to use a factor's criteria, are equal. And, you know, it can say, well, you know, X passed, so therefore we got to do it. How do we weight a factor properly so that we can put it together and say, okay, there's a way to more this way than that other way? And I do recognize some of these would be personal judgment on it. So, how do you, you know, one or more factors, it's like a one and all, you know, you got to meet them all. I know a statement here is not required that all the standards fail or pass, but some concept to be used here that we can at least discuss, and then maybe come up with something. And there's another type of factor that, you know, I, understanding, and see if my understanding is right, that the public support and not support is not a factor that we can use?
No, that's not really true.
Okay, that's what I didn't know.
It's not in the sense that if, if I ask you, I think somebody asked for a raise of hands in the last meeting, if I'm calling incorrectly, we'll do that, but what we do is, we do listen to the comments that are made. So we, we pick out the factual elements of, of what people were telling us, and we, we add that to your factors.
Okay.
It's not like you ignore them, it's just that, you know, somebody got really heated and, you know, I don't know, got off the subject, for example, then we, that would go somewhere else, but otherwise, yeah, we do, we do use the comments in public adage here.
The comments, not just a, a opinion one way or the other. Your favor, not feeling. Okay, so you got, you picked up, extracted facts.
How people, how people think that they could be affected by it.
I just want to clarify that, that's my understanding, but I want to make sure that it was a correct understanding, okay? And, and what I said about weighting, that somehow we, I think we need some discussions on that, some directions.
I'd like to do a little research on noise, how, how this airport would affect our community, if we had a lot more traffic in it, and I, I would guess that's what Mr. Bayes would like to do, to have more airplane traffic in there, which is understandable. How would that affect our community?
If we have, for example, an airport layout plan, that's part of the airport layout plan, it's a, a noise level.
Yeah, decibel level. Okay. Kelly? Good. Do you have enough to get going, or would you like some more?
I'll, I'll take as much as you can give us.
Does anybody have a, anything that's?
So everything we've heard so far has been why we should vote it down. Not, none of, none, nobody said anything about why we should have it, correct?
Under, under that particular, right, that option.
So when we come to this, at the fact finding, after you guys do your research, we're, we're going to be voting on whether the information that you found backs up why we should deny it.
Right, at this point in time, based on the input we received, we would be drafting findings of fact to deny the application that you would be reviewing and voting on. Right, the revised application that has those characteristics. So, and there may be some findings in there that are positive or true, but, you know, we're also going to take into consideration some of Barbara's comments, and, you know, even Bill's comments about the noise, and put those in there.
Would it be appropriate for the next week or so, if we feed additional information into you that we'd like you to research, or just want to cut it off tonight?
I think I'd prefer that it be done tonight.
Okay.
Because you'll have the opportunity to.
We can still review it.
You can, you can add into it after, at the next meeting, with, from the draft, if there's additional.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if that kind of jogs something, you go, oh, yes, yes, we need to add that, we can do that at the next meeting.
Okay.
We're in order, Mr. Chair. Is the consultant seeking additional input?
I'm sorry, sir, I can't hear you.
The consultant is requesting additional input.
From the commissioners.
I understand. However, there are people here that would like to present me with some additional information. Can we do it at this point?
You can do that under public commentary.
At the end?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, if, or, but just for saying, if we had something writing, want to put something writing, send it to the chair.
I want to record it as a video, and I will send it in.
Okay.
Send it to me, please, I'll pass it on. Thank you.
The writing is important to us.
Any other discussions? Are you guys okay?
So the general consensus is we'll be coming back with drafted findings to deny this request.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
We're just going to come up with some ideas, some suggestions. Kind of just the first round. Yeah, very general, right. Okay.
We're good?
We're good.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank, commissioners, thank you. Good questions. Okay, we're moving on to new business, number 10.
Mr. Chairman, I could be excused on driving back tonight, so.
Sure.
Does you have any other questions?
You're on the clock, we're good.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, under new business, we did receive a couple letters I referred to earlier regarding, for lack of a better term, Dollar General. I'd like you to know that the Township Board Friday passed a resolution 2021-25 adopting a 60-day moratorium on the issuance of zoning permits for construction of village business and commercial zoning districts. So that puts everything on hold for 60 days for the board to consider it, and for the planning commissioners to look at the zoning ordinances, and we'll be working with Sarah pretty closely on that. So that's going to be a top priority for us, just so you know.
Uh, Bill, uh, did you want to hear any additional information from either Bob or Jason about that, the moratorium and how they got to that?
I'd love to.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I think the supervisors here.
Bob, would you like to address that?
Just because this is kind, this is the first time the planning commission's even aware of it, probably, that it happened, and helped to explain kind of what our goals and objectives are going to be moving forward, based on, on the Township Board's thoughts.
So, I've been writing some notes so that I can keep it short. Let me, let me. You're too tall.
Does that help?
Yeah.
All right. A couple of comments. First of all, I found out about this, and everybody else in the township building found out about this, by our normal course of conversation, it was a rumor. So, we started receiving a significant amount of email and phone traffic against allowing Dollar General into the community. It was clearly the vast majority of people that did take the time to communicate to us that they were against it. Let me be clear, to date, the Township has re, received no application, and to my knowledge, no communication from Data General, and I believe we only had one phone call from a developer, which kind of started to lead us down the path of potentially having such an application. The owner of Eastport Market, I've spent time with him, he communicated that he had been giving, given some information that led him to believe that Data General was very serious about looking at that piece of property. I felt based on the feedback that the citizens deserved a right to express their opinion, not only in public, but directly to the planning commission. In talking with Sarah and our attorney, the fastest way to prevent any action taken place before the community had a chance to express that opinion, was to put a moratorium on it. Now, it's a 60-day moratorium. It is renewable for only 30 days without another vote. The idea here is the planning commission needs time to set up a special meeting, to have a pub, public hearing, and it's the community that's going to determine what it is that the planning commission does. Now, they've got a couple options. One is, they can decrease the square footage required, because currently, in a village business plot, you can put a facility of 12,000 to 15,000 square feet. We know the cookie cutter Dollar General is 9,700 square feet. So they can evaluate the square footage that is currently in the ordinance, and depending on the citizen feedback, and their opinion as to what that might do to the community, they can make a decision of either changing that or leaving it the same. So in reality, the decision around Dollar General right now, or any other vendor for that matter, will reside with the planning commission and the citizens, which is where it is exactly supposed to reside. And the Township Board took their action to make sure that your voices would be heard, and the planning commission would have time to sufficiently evaluate that, that issue. One other fact, we are not the only ones that take action to try One other fact, we are not the only ones that take action to try to prevent this. I've had Todd researching, there, there's over a dozen townships that are either working on or already have passed ordinances that will monitor the square footage that is available for individuals to use in specific zoned areas. And it, it, when they pass that, and I'm hoping the planning commission does the same thing, that they do it in conjunction with what the citizens want and what's best for the community. So I'm happy to take any questions, send me your emails, you can call me. I'm willing to to discuss it with anyone, but the action now with the moratorium is with you, the community, and with the planning commission. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, obviously, we've got a lot to think about. Moving on to B, ordinary high watermark definition. I've asked Sarah to, to research the issues on Torch Lake on high watermarks. In the past, we've had difficulty. We, to determine the high watermark, there's guidelines to go by. Unfortunately, at Torch Lake, the topography is vastly different. Some areas at the north end are flat, it's easy to see where the high watermark is on the beach from previous years, other has cliffs. So the net, net is, we got into a bit of an issue two years ago with a township resident building a home. And they determined where the high watermark was based on vegetation, which, by the way, moves back and forth. It's a moving target. And so they determined where the high watermark was, and the builder went ahead and built the building. Unfortunately, the building was with, it was inside the 50-foot setback. And I'll, I'll say by a foot and a half, but don't hold me to that. But it was a point of huge contention. So we discussed this briefly, and I went out and talked to surveyors. I talked to the commissioner of drains, which runs the dam in Elk Lake, in Elk Rapids. He firmly, and I just talked to him yesterday, he firmly says, we don't control the water in Torch Lake. The volume's too big, no matter what we do, we can't control it. So looking at that and looking at what happened two, three weeks ago with the rainfalls we had, the water level in Torch Lake went up, and I measured it, 18 inches in two hours. My dock was completely underwater. I'm thinking, you know, we're just moving with a, with a moving target here. We need to come in with a better way to measure this. So Sarah went out and did some research with other communities that face the same issue. And Sarah, can you kind of go over what your findings are on that?
Sure. Um, you know, and I've dealt with this, this is something that waterfront communities deal with, how to define what your ordinary high watermark is for your water setback. So on Lake Michigan, we have an elevation. That's set, that's, this is the elevation. So to find that elevation, you have a surveyor come in, they mark that line based on the height above sea level. This is where that elevation is, and you measure from that line. For Torch Lake, we do not have a number, we don't have any real direction on that. We just talk about water's edge, is what our zoning ordinance talks about, which says water's edge, there's no definition for what water's edge is. So if you apply just the little reading based on the definition, where the water's edge is on that day. As you mentioned, as I mentioned in my report, the water's edge moves every day based on the wind of the day.
Based on rainfall.
Exactly, rainfall, it's, it's a moving target. So water's edge is, is difficult just because it moves a lot, and so structures, their setbacks also move and they change. So somebody could be building a structure that one day is conforming and meets the ordinance and the next week is non-conforming and doesn't meet the ordinance and can cause some issues. So I mentioned in the report a couple of ways to deal with delineating the water's edge or that waterfront setback. You can do the elevation above sea level, the vegetation or the water's edge, already does, to kind of discuss the water's edge. Vegetation is popular. It has to do with where permanent vegetation grows is where you start your measurement from, thinking that it's more consistent because it takes time for that vegetation to change as the water comes up and goes down. You know, typically, you're looking at the edge of where somebody has sand to where they have grass. You know, that's the vegetation line, it can be more natural than that. Could be the top of a bluff or a cliff or the top of a break wall, if there is one of some sort there. Is going to be your vegetation line. Vegetation works, but it is also up to interpretation, there's usually some fighting about it. If somebody has a small lot with the zoning administrator's interpretation of where that vegetation line is, what's permanent vegetation, what's not permanent vegetation, and perhaps a developer or an applicant. The elevation above sea level, that's a very constant number, it's very easy to define. It's consistent, it doesn't move. And it's something that, from an enforcement standpoint, is very clear and easy to deal with. The negative side is that you do need to have a surveyor determine where that location is. And we also need to determine what that number should be. As Bill mentioned about the elevation and the dam, we can't rely on that to, to maintain what that number would be. I reached out to the watershed council today to say, is there anything, website documents, anything that can help us? You know, the Great Lakes, the Army Corps keeps track of it, they tell us this information. Inland lakes, we don't have that unless there's some sort of a gauge that we can go back over time and say, the average elevation of the lake is this. To know and get that data for it, we don't have any, any data, official data, I don't know if somebody has unofficial. So trying to come up with, well, what would the elevation be? I looked at the FEMA flood maps and the flood plain, the flood zone areas as a way of perhaps defining what that number is. The existing maps that we have for the township are from the 70s, they're quite old. But that elevation is 591 feet above sea level, it's a little bit less, but to round it up.
Point eight.
Yeah, so 591. So what that means when you're looking at the flood map is that if you are at an elevation that is lower than 591, you have a structure, that structure is required to obtain flood insurance in case you have a flood or there is a flood event on your property. And that's, you know, all through FEMA. And then if you're above that elevation, and there, you could have the, you can have structures removed, but just at the basic level. If you're above that elevation, then you would not be required to have flood insurance because your property is not intended to flood because it's high enough above that elevation. So with that.
By the way, FEMA is reevaluating this whole area right now. The, the feeling from people that know, and I certainly don't, is the reason FEMA is doing this is because they don't have the money to handle disasters. Like it just happened in Louisiana and on the East Coast, somebody's got to come in and help these people out. So if you're below FEMA's standard flood level footage, you can expect your insurance to go up. And you can expect if you're going for a mortgage, that you won't get one. And so that's why I'm looking at this going, I really feel it's important for all of us in this community to establish a level above sea level for Torch Lake residents. There's a standard and fixed height above sea level. Other communities have done it, Milton, Ebonine, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, there's some examples in here.
Charlotte County, Bay County.
Charlotte Bay.
It just protects us more.
Yeah. And so I don't, you know, I think that the number, if you're interested in going with some sort of an elevation number, I could reach out to, to discuss with like a surveyor, a professional that works in that area, if you're interested in going on that. I didn't want to spend too much time on it because if you're not interested in changing anything, you know, but if you want to look at that.
I only did.
Okay.
So what happens is when, let's just say you buy a piece of property in Torch Lake, and you want to build something, well, you're going to have a surveyor come in. But the first thing he does is set his level above sea level. That is, is site instruments, so they're already doing that. They say they do it all the time. The information I got back from two surveyors out of Traverse City is the lake level of Torch Lake is 590 feet. So if you look at Milton Township, they've set their high watermark at 590.8 feet. So eight inches above normal water level. And so that would go back on the shore, and then you would put a vertical pole up and measure 50 feet back from that, and that's your setback. So it really defines it, it takes the guessing out of it, and it's really fair to people that are building so they're not faced with the issue we have to deal with. So that's kind of our goal.
And I did look at all the townships around the lake just to see if somebody else had something else and, you know, no one else, they either don't have zoning or.
Yeah, they don't have zoning.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I think that is consistent if you're looking at Milton, who's just south of us, having that, that elevation, and that would get the structures in a similar line or area setback far enough.
Anybody else?
I was just saying, when I was chair, you know, a while ago, we had this concern that came up also on what you measure at the bayside, and we came on your high water line, had a discussion where it is. And I was surprised to hear that we didn't have one at Torch Lake. Some kind of demarcation versus where's the water today versus tomorrow, how much that can vary. I don't think it's fair to homeowners who buy in Torch Lake just because they're flat land versus elevation to have a, an impact like that, that we can't say, this is it, just point 50 feet back.
Well, let me give the commissioners an example. It just happened, I have never seen Torch Lake this high. My dock is usually 18 inches above water, it was underwater. So between where the water's edge is now, today, compared to where it was a week and a half, two weeks ago, that was nine feet up by shore. So that's a nine-foot differential. So getting to people that want to build, that's kind of a, well, it's here, and it's here, and it's here. And if you're having a problem with a setback issue going back to your property, it's not really fair to the property. So that's kind of why I brought this up. If I'd looked at, I could actually see Torch Lake rise. Right, thinking, what's going on?
You've mentioned the surveying, and, and what you're saying is that, that an elevation would be typically included with that?
They, when they come in to set their transit, I don't know the new name, LPL. Okay. They set it to a sea level, they base everything on that, wherever they're at. And on the pier down here at Torch Lake Township, there's a gold marker on that pier. And that enables a surveyor to come in and set his instruments to calibrate them, and then they go off and work. There's one in all of them, there's one here.
I guess ultimately, my curiosity is, what's it cost to do this? But it, but at the end of the.
There really is no more additional cost for the surveyors.
But at the end of the day, I would agree with you, I mean, if we don't pick a elevation, we're setting setbacks from an arbitrary, subjectively determined point, which is going to lead to problems.
That's your problem.
Right, it's, it's.
Any other discussion on this?
No, it sounds like the direction would be to be drafting language to put an elevation in.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make the following motion. I'd like to mo, make a motion to change the zoning ordinance 2.16, section B. If, if, Veronica? I'll give you this, okay? From, no structure may be located within 50 feet of the water's edge of Torch Lake or within 50 feet of the ordinary high watermark of Lake Michigan. Two, this is the proposal, like I can read. No structure may be located within 50 feet of the high watermark of 590.8 feet above sea level on Torch Lake or within 50 feet of the ordinary high watermark of Lake Michigan. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
W, the, the, the people about the last paragraph or so of your.
Okay, by the way, take a run of the zoning.
Okay.
Okay, the last one is, the proposal is, no structure may be located within 50 feet of the high watermark of 590.8 feet above sea level on Torch Lake or within 50 feet of the ordinary high watermark of Lake Michigan.
Okay.
The only changes, the elevation of Torch Lake. Do I have a second?
I second.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion?
A question is, was the 590.58 with Milton Township?
Yes, and by the way, the numbers I've been working with over the years, it's always been 590 feet above sea level for Torch Lake. So you kind of put a pin in the map and say, here it is. Okay. More discussion? Can I call for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes and ahs, thank you.
Bill, as inside, it was mentioned just a short time ago that we have no statistical data for that. Might recommend to the board or ask, request the board to put a gauge on the end of the fire department pier so we can monitor that maybe on a weekly basis and start capturing some of this data.
Yeah, oh, you know, sidebar, that's the, I don't want to get too deep into this. But Mark Stoll, the drain commissioner, and the FEMA have invested, I'll, I'll pick a number, $10,000 to $15,000 in putting monitors in all the lakes around here. They've been monitoring for the last 12 months, the computer monitors, but they keep the data within that monitor, it's full out there, and then November 1st, they come and pick it all up, so they're going to see what's happening. Mark Stoll, the drain commissioner, said, we're not going to know what to do with the data in Torch Lake. It's going so much, and we're just going to like, wow, you know, not to do this. So, but that's going to be done on an ongoing basis on a monthly, okay? So we're monitoring that.
Okay.
We view it, Mark. Thank you. So, Marvin.
Yeah, your motion did not include in it the the high watermark on Lake Michigan. You did it for Torch, but you didn't do it for, for Lake Michigan?
Well, the, it's a good point, but I think, and I'm not positive, that there already is a high watermark established for Lake Michigan.
There is, there is, okay, we just don't need to mention it again in our orders.
I didn't, I didn't mention it yet.
Okay.
Okay, number 11, thank you, by the way. Concerns of the commission, the chair. We've run into a little bit of a, of a speed bump. I don't think there's anybody on the board or the commission that doesn't want to have all of our documents published prior to the meetings, so you can see these 41-page packs. And we tried to do it this time, but we had a problem with, I'll call them the webmaster, trying to, and Bob's been working with it, by the way, to try and get this done, so it, and I apologize for that. We wanted to put all this online, so you could see it prior to the meeting, because there's a lot of information. The people are watching this on YouTube, so they, they have the right to see this as well. So you're talking with Bob today, I think, Bob, are we pretty well confident we can get this solved?
I think it's on, it's on the website now, and the problem is solved.
See how good you are?
Right.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, concerns of the members?
Yeah, I have, I do. I have some concerns as far as, I'm a little troubled. I've never met Mr. Bays, this is only the second or third time I've ever seen this man. And some of the stuff that I've read on social media and out of some of the 44 letters that I heard, if I had a form of opinion about this man, I would think he was a very evil man. So I'm troubled that some of the angles that people are taking towards him. And I've heard a lot of rumors out there, and if some of these rumors are true, I feel like our township's probably going to be in a lawsuit. So I'm just real concerned with social media, it's a small town, everybody hears everything, everybody sees everything. And what I read today on social media just angered me and troubled me, so that's all I have to say.
Chalton?
I had something and I forgot, so I apologize.
I had something, and I forgot, so I apologize. Nothing at this, oh, I remember now. I just want to encourage the planning commission to really think about this village business and commercial zoning district. We have a very, very, very short window to deal with this. You know, 60 days does not really even give us enough time to hold a public hearing, send it to Antrim County, and get it to the board for adoption. So I don't know if it's something that, if we have the availability, maybe we could have a special meeting to even talk about before the end of the month to start this discussion and dialogue. You know, we, we need to not, it's not a knee-jerk reaction, but we need to have discussions, we need to move quickly through the process.
Sarah, that will be considered.
Yes, so I just want to make sure that that's clear, and I believe that's all.
Okay, good. Moving on to number 12, public commentary.
Is he going to make this comment?
Yeah, Randy Bishop's going to make a comment. You don't read his comment, just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Recognizing Randy Bishop, who would like to make a comment?
I live on Wood Special Drive in the township. Or the consultant, where did she go?
Right in the back.
Okay, I do want to give her a note to make sure it's incorporated in their findings. Michigan compiled law 125.3203. It definitely applies, and I'd like to make sure that MCL 125.3203 is considered in their fact-finding. It does apply. Additionally, MCL 125.3207 cannot preclude illegal land use when it comes to airports that are grandfathered in. You must, per the law, the statute, accommodate all uses to an airport unless there is specific harm being caused to the community. And when they do their findings under that MCL, they'll realize that. Property rights are something that are guaranteed to a piece of property based on current zoning. You have the right to amend, obviously. However, if intent to purchase, develop, and use a piece of property based on current zoning, and then because you hear from some folks in the community, and the supervisor said, you know, "They got a lot of response about Dollar General," it's all finding good, but you don't get to put your finger up in the air and get results, feedback from your community, and then change zoning that's currently on the books. What you are exposing this township to is litigation. And to be quite frank with you, Mr. Baze, I would sue the crap out of them. Stop this whole process and sue. And not only sue the township, but pierce governmental immunity and sue every single one of the elected officials and appoint personally. This infringement on our property rights, our children's rights, I'm going Thursday to Antrim County regarding mask mandates on school kids. This insanity has got to stop. And if it's going to take a lawsuit to get your attention, causing us, the taxpayers, to have to pay for your legal costs to defend these lawsuits, we will take action. People will be recalled, people will be replaced, because you're costing us, the taxpayers, money for delaying people's time to develop and use their own property. He's been patient. Every single day that he's waited to build a hangar for his own plane, costs have gone up. Look at inflation, look at CPI, look at the cost of construction materials, look at fuel the next time you go to the gas pump versus a year ago. It's going up on a daily, weekly basis. I would sue for cost, because if he wanted to build a hangar months ago, it would have been cheaper than what he's going to have to put up money to do in the future. It's not even being considered, because you guys, and I'm going to talk to Mr. Martel about this at the commissioners' meeting, I'm sending a FOIA request to him and to your IT department to get every one of his outgoing and incoming emails for the past three years. And since this township pays for their cell phones, I'm giving his cell phones too. Every call incoming and outgoing on his personal cellphone will be FOIA'd, because I know, I didn't get his little email that he sent out to the good constituents of Torch Lake Township, but others did. Now, there's a problem also with tonight's meeting. Okay, Deb Graber has a GoFundMe for legal services. Through dour rights of her husband's assets, Susan Stride Iron made a $50 payment to Deb Graber for legal expenses. I would make a motion that everything he said tonight at this meeting, every motion he made, he had a conflict of interest, and he gave the board an opportunity to decide if that conflict of interest was present with any of you, but he didn't answer the question himself. The motion you voted on has to be struck, stripped from the record. He had to recuse himself because of Susan's donation to Deb Graber's GoFundMe. I have it on my phone. Also, he's the neighbor to Lake Home Services. Because of Bob Cook's moratorium, their construction permit is tied up for the next 60 days to finish the repairs that they want to make on their building. I would even argue that Bob Cook's emergency meeting was a violation of the Open Meetings Act, because it occurred too quickly without proper notice to the public, and two of the commissioners or trustees didn't even know what time it was.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
We're over two minutes. If you could sum up, please.
I will sum it up right now. I don't want this township to be sued. I don't want the taxpayers to pay the cost of those lawsuits, and I'm sick and tired of our rights being taken from us. Thank you.
Do we have any more public commentary?
That is me. So now, I'm officially pissed, and I'm going to tell you why. I had no idea what that man was going to say, but while we were watching it or while I was sitting there, I had emails come in that said exactly the same he did about Susan, sent me the pictures, the conflict of interest. In addition to that, the one really pushing Barbara Boudros to get this denied, husband at the last meeting openly opposed this thing moving forward. So we don't have one, but we have two conflicts of interest, both pushing for the denial of my application. What I also want to say is, even if it's denied, it changes nothing in terms of the airport. I'm regulated by the FAA. These guys can't do anything. All it changes is me getting the ability to put my own Dagon hangar in, in a PUD, in a development that's already approved by the township. So we'll see what happens.
Who's the next speaker?
The next speaker is Andy Graves.
So I'm Andy Graves, reside at 1377 Bayview Drive in Kuwaiten. My commentary has nothing to do with the topic that was just discussed a moment ago. It actually has to do with the setback requirements. And I just wanted to make everybody aware that you were talking about putting a zoning, an amendment to have a high-water mark set for Torch Lake. I think that's a good idea. I just wanted to share that since I've been going through some permitting processes for an addition on Grand Traverse Bay, that there's actually another layer of complexity if you happen to reside. So this is more of an informative thing. If you happen to reside in a critical dune, you have to be aware of a setback requirement that's not just 50 feet back from the 100-foot high-water mark, which is pretty easy to define, as explained earlier, but you also have to comply with being 50 feet back from what they call the high erosion line. Had no idea what that was, but that, I can tell you, is a very arbitrary line, and it has to do where they draw the slope as actively eroding, which can vary year by year based on how much activity you're getting. So it was simply something to be aware of, that if you're going through it and you go through a permitting process and you're considering that, be aware that if you are subject to critical dune regulations, you're going to have to comply with the EAGLE, which is the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy for the state. So, thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Any other public commentary? Yeah, we're going to move on to number 13, adjournment. Like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight?
Can we, are we allowed to say anymore?
I'm sorry?
Are we allowed to say anymore? Are we allowed to say anymore?
Sure.
Is what Mr. Bishop said true with your wife? Is there a conflict of interest?
My wife does what she wants to do, there's no conflict. There's no conflict.
Because if that's true, and I, and I voted on the, or didn't say there ain't anything about conflict of interest, then I'm pissed.
Anybody else comment? I'd like a motion to what you're going about.
Regarding a conflict of interest, is it not, is your wife not able to do anything that she wants to do?
She can do anything she wants to do.
Of course. Are you bound, are you bound by...
I'm not bound, she's not bound what I tell her to do, and I'm not bound what she tells me to do. Although I think sometimes I am. I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second, please? Discuss? Can I have a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good evening, thank you.
Yeah, I guess.